Disappeared.
He's just checking up.
Okay, all right, we're ready then. With that, I will call the meeting to order and this is the April 20th regular council meeting for the city of Minatrista. So welcome all of you that are here this evening and also those that may be watching on YouTube at a later date. First, our order of business will be to please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So first, I'll make some introductions. To my left is Councilmember Thol, Councilmember Mortensen. We do have two councilmembers absent this evening, Mr. Vanderlinde and Mr. Christians. We expect Mr. Christians at a little bit later time to join us. And then on the end, we have our city engineer, Paul Hornby, and taking our minutes is our new city clerk, Chris Lindquist. Thank you. And then to my right is our city administrator, Mr. Barone, Mike Barone. Next to him, our finance director, Brian Grimm, then our community development director, David Abel, our city attorney, Ron Beatty, and sitting in for our chief this evening is Sergeant, excuse me, Mr. Squires. Thank you. We also have in our audience Mr. Gary Peters, who is our superintendent for public works and will also be introducing a new public works individual, and I'll hold off on that until we get to that agenda item. With that, we have approval of our agenda. I would like to add one item, under consent agenda. We discussed this at our work session. It was for the trees, for planting at the Gillespie Park. So it would be approving a contract with Midwest Landscape for $17,110 or not to exceed that amount for planting trees in the Gillespie Park. I'd just like to add that to our consent agenda since we have quite a few things on our agenda and it was discussed at length at a work session. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. Are there any other additions to our agenda or changes? Hearing none, then I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that addition.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented with that one addition to consent agenda. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Next is our special presentations. This evening, we have, first we'll start with our public works person, Gary or Mr. Barone, who would like to do that?
I'll take this one, Mayor. Thank you very much. And Adam, if you want to step up to the podium while I introduce you. Standing before you is our newest public works employee. His name is Adam Hegeholtz. Adam started on April 6th, so just a couple of weeks ago. He graduated from high school, from Chaska High School, I believe still lives in area of Waconia, I believe. His background, he previously worked at Southwest Transit as a facility maintenance lead for the last sixteen years before joining the city. He supervised thirty employees and helped lead their crew in dealing with all their facilities. His experience also includes the fact that he spent seven and a half years as a member of the Minnesota Army National Guard, and that's where he did a majority of his work related to heavy equipment operation that translates to being a public works employee. And also included in that time with the National Guard, Adam was deployed to Afghanistan for a period of a year tour of duty, and a lot of his work there, again, revolved around building roads and things of that nature in Afghanistan. So we're glad Adam is here and we welcome him, and I don't know if you want to say any comments at all?
Yeah, I'm just really glad to be here myself and take the opportunity that you've given me to expand my public works career, so thank you.
Thank you and welcome. We will enjoy having you onboard, and I'm sure Gary will too. So, thank you.
My name is Bob Christians. I live at 6851 Carter Boulevard, and I'm terribly, terribly sorry I got tied in traffic.
We already made an excuse for you, Mr. Christians. Thank you. So, and Gary, I'm sure you're happy to have more people onboard, so.
Yes, I am.
Okay. With that, we have special guests with us this evening for a special presentation. We have Jeanie Brewstedt and some others. Do you want to come forward and introduce your people and then you have a presentation for us? She is with the Gillespie Center.
I'll just talk first.
Okay.
I want to thank you for allowing me to come to your council meeting representing the Gillespie Center. We're very happy that you value the Gillespie Center and we want to take this opportunity to thank you for what you do for us, to make it possible for us to ensure that there will be a senior and community center in the future. We are an organization of about 500 members. Many in our community that are not members also use our facility for various activities and programs. We have members from over ten different communities, mainly Minatrista, Mound, Spring Park, and Orno. Now, I've never been in charge of this before, so this is. According to a recent population count, there were 6,384 residents in the city of Minatrista. Approximately 16 percent of those residents were ages 60 and over. However, since we're saving it for the future, we have to think about who's next, and there are 1,211 people aged 50 to 59, which makes that percentage double. Research says that compared to their peers, seniors that participate in a senior program have a higher level of health, social interaction, and life satisfaction. Research also shows that older adults who participate in senior center programs can learn to manage and delay onset of chronic disease, and they experience measurable improvements in their physical, social, spiritual, emotional, mental, and economic well-being. And as a representative of the Board of Gillespie Center, I'd like to thank you for supporting that relationship. As an aside, we have fourteen board members at the Gillespie Center and five of those board members live in Minatrista. At Gillespie Center, we take several day trips each year. We take trips to activities that are happening in our community as well as outside of our community. This includes trips to Gale Woods Farms, the Twins Games, touring Target Stadium, various gambling facilities, the symphony plays, my favorite Chocolate Factory in Waconia, and many other places of interest. The Gillespie Center makes every effort to be part of the community. We're involved in the Spirit of the Lakes Parade as well as a host of other booths that we have showcasing our facility. That weekend, we host a bingo night. We have square dancing displays with root beer floats all during the weekend of activities at the park. We have participated in the Minatrista Safety Day held each year. We also worked with the Westonka Historical Society and we helped put on the program that celebrated when Minatrista celebrated turning 150 years old. As most senior centers, we have the usual activities. We have a very active photography club where this group takes field trips to learn different techniques with their cameras, and they also have days where they talk at the center about how to show and use those photographs. We also have almost every kind of card club that you can think of, as well as the dice game, farkel, a beating class, craft clubs, knitting, crocheting, painting group, book club, and several other groups as needed. Following a survey of our membership this spring, we have added several other activities. One of them is the walking group that will be starting next week, if it gets warm. We also host various programs and displays for our members and members of this community to share their talents. Here is just one of the quilts that one of our quilting clubs made. We have several exercise groups for several different age groups. We have line dancing, two different levels of exercise groups, and this year, we started hosting yoga. These are also very popular and help to keep our seniors as well as other community members that join us healthy. Now, we have several gardens at our facility. We have a small group of volunteers that work in those gardens, and this year, the Westonka Garden Guild is going to coordinate and join us to take on a project of developing a new garden in our backyard. We are always looking for ways to entertain our members. Sometimes these entertainment activities are at fundraising functions, but we also enjoy entertainment at other activities that happen at the center. These entertainment opportunities are often our own members, but they usually are shared with people from other communities. We provide functions for community members to celebrate most of the holidays. Food tends to be big at most of these activities. Participants often dress for this occasion, whether it's green for St. Patrick's Day or they try to think warm with a Hawaiian luau in the middle of the winter. And with food comes our incredible group, The Flower Power, those volunteers. They often spend hours, usually a day or two before an event, making desserts, side dishes, and everything that goes with the activity. This group of volunteers also cooks the food for most of the high school's spring sporting events and other sporting events that are held at the Gillespie Center. And these activities almost always include volunteers from the high school that's located in Minatrista. The students involved in DECA and the Honor Society, as well as other groups, including the Boy Scouts, are often asked to help serve the food and clean up afterwards. Usually when asked, these students spend their Friday or Saturday evenings helping with these activities. This relationship is an excellent opportunity for our high school students to work together with a different generation of adults. Our task each year in meeting our obligation to the contract that we have with Minatrista, Mound, and Spring Park is to match the monies that you supply to us with an additional 5%. So we're able to put money each year into an endowment fund so the Gillespie Center will be soon able to be self-sufficient and continue to provide services to the community in the future. To do this, we host several fundraisers and have several activities that help to raise these funds. We have a golf tournament. We house a hidden treasures. We host a festival of trees, a holiday boutique with over eighty vendors, all of which involve people from all over this community to help with these fundraisers. We also sell sweepstakes tickets. We have luncheons and many evening activities. We collaborate with Alan Elmas to have a Monday Noon Cruise every Monday during June, July, and August. We will be hosting a meeting for each of the contract cities at the end of April to answer specific financial questions that you may have as a council. We also help our community with our Community Outreach Bakery Program. Different volunteers drive to Cub Foods every morning and pick up their day-old baked goods and take them to the center. There are many in this community that arrive several days a week to get their baked goods with a donation. Many age groups take advantage of this service. We attempt to have many collaborative activities with the various schools in our community, early childhood, elementary schools, as well as OLL. These activities make it possible for several intergenerational activities to occur, which is healthy for both sides of the age spectrum. We have two quilting clubs, one that creates quilts for themselves and for various fundraising activities. Another quilting group works on quilts that they donate to We Can for those community members that need a warm hug from a homemade quilt. Probably the one activity that we host each year that is the most popular with the youth of our community is Santa's Hidden Treasure. This is a time when parents and/or grandparents bring their young children to the Gillespie Center. Through donations of items and monies, the elves of the Gillespie Center have gathered many gifts for sale. The children, again, with the aid of the high school volunteers, as well as some of our seniors, go through the gift items with the individual child and select gifts for their own family members. They also may take a picture with Santa and enjoy a day getting themselves ready for the holidays. We are an organization where most of the activities are run by volunteers. We have one full-time employee, Mindy Anderson, who is hired for us by the senior community services with our collaboration with them. We also have two part-time employees. Wendy Bame is hired to coordinate our rental activities, and she helps to coordinate those activities. And Greg Sletton is both our custodian, and on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, he prepares our noon lunches. However, all of these full and part-time employees use volunteers to complete their tasks and events. We have a volunteer at the front desk every day helping direct the visitors to their activities. During each calendar year, we have over 300 volunteers spending thousands of hours of volunteer time. Probably the one activity that we host each month that is popular with the community of all ages is our classic country jam. This is held the third Wednesday of each month, and several musicians from all over this and other surrounding communities do just that. They jam. Participants may come at noon and have a great meal for $5 each day, or they may come at 1:00 and just enjoy the jam. This is free, and most of the time, there are over sixty members in the audience. In December, there were over 150. And to conclude, we just want to say thanks. You are helping us to have an incredible senior and community center. We were selected by the Lake Minnetoka Magazine readers as the best class and programs for seniors in 2014. By helping to support us, you are creating a city to live in for the present as well as the future. Thank you, Minatrista, for keeping Bill Gillespie's dream alive for his mother. I'm going to introduce you. We have Donna Smith.
If you could just stand, then we can see you.
We have Bart Calhoun, who is a past president. She was the president before me. Chuck Radke is the, these are all Minatrista residents. Chuck Radke is our treasurer. And we have Dwayne Idy. He was a teacher in Mound, at the high school. And Donna Smith. I think that's the Gillespie people that I know.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
I just have a couple.
Yes.
Do you know how many Minatrista residents are actual members of the Gillespie Center?
You know, with the zip codes the way they are, it's very hard, but I think we know about sixty-five at least. Sixty-five at least, but we have some, unless we get the street names and do, because the zip codes don't help us very much.
And then, any further, remember when you and I met and I realized you guys were paying property taxes?
I think he has finally, did, did.
I've seen some emails go back and forth, so I'm hoping that you will get that exempt status.
We're working on that, and the person that you contacted with us is sure that it'll work, that we can get both. There's actually two properties we pay taxes on, and he's going to, he thinks there's no reason why they both can't be exempt.
Right.
And I don't know who gave us the other advice before.
Okay, well, I'm glad I caught that, because.
We're glad you caught that, too.
Couple thousand dollars a year, plus you can go back two years.
He thinks, yes, I was just going to say that. He thinks we can go back two years and get it back.
Right, so good. And yes, myself and our finance director, Brian Grimm, will be joining us at that meeting on the 30th.
Perfect, at four o'clock.
Yep, four o'clock.
At Gillespie, we will be there with lots of paperwork.
Okay. Do you have any questions of the council, or does the council have questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Nice presentation. Thank you, Ms. Brewstedt. Next, we have persons to be heard. Now, I have a couple people listed, of course, Ms. Brewstedt, but then I have Brian Peterson, also from the Gillespie Center.
Yes.
Okay, did you want to say something as well?
I came to, I'm a long-term resident of the area, sixty-plus years, and I came to tell you about Gillespie Center, but after that fine presentation by Jeanne, and Ed, except for I really hope that the council will support this because it is a very worthwhile organization. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, then with that, we will move on. So our next item of business is consent agenda. That includes approval of our regular meeting minutes from April 6th, approval of our special meeting minutes from April 6th, a resolution number 61-15 approving claims, resolution number 62-15 approve agreement with Quality Propane Incorporated for the 2015 dust abatement, resolution number 63-15 approve agreement with Overline &amp; Sun Incorporated for 2015 through 2017 lift station cleaning, and resolution number 64-15 approve agreement with Overline &amp; Sun Incorporated for 2015 through 2017 sewer line cleaning. And number G is what we added, Mr. Christians, you weren't here, the approval of the contract with Midwest Landscaping for $17,110 for planting trees in the Gillespie Park. Any question, comments? Otherwise, I motion to approve those consent agenda items.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including item G.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve consent agenda items A through G. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Next, we move on to our business items. Number A is Hoffman drainage discussion. Who would like to take that?
Mr. Hornby will be leading us through that one.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Give your pack if there's a memo on the Hoffman drainage item, but also in general, too, about the CIP for the 2015 stormwater issues. As you may recall from our road tour, we did take a look and stopped by the Hoffman site. That's the one that had, just off of County Road 110, and had the county road, I think it was the school system, and then some other neighborhoods that drained through their natural low point. That's where the natural low point is. Last year was probably the most significant item where they did with, I think it was the seven-inch rainfall. It might have been a six-inch rainfall before that, but they got a lot of water through the channel. There was a lot of erosion, created a delta at the end, and the water spilled up over the yard and basically made the yard unusable, both for the Hoffmanns and also for the adjacent neighbor. And when we looked at that, we looked at some improvements as far as restoring the channel, and we applied for two grants, one from the Hennepin County Natural Resources Program and the other from the Bowser Clean Water Fund Projects and Practices Program. Both of those projects had a lot of, both of those funding programs had a lot of applications, and they prioritize those on what they believe the need is based on the application, and we were not successful in receiving funding from either of those grant programs for this grant cycle. The Hoffmanns did contact me, I think they may have contacted the members of the council too, about whether or not this project's going to move forward. In the capital improvement plan, which is also included in the memo, we have about $100,000 budgeted for that project. When we applied for the grants, we showed about $125,000 in project costs. We also do have a number of items, we brought to the council previously, a number of items for the new members, maybe you haven't seen this, but there's about eleven items that came about after last spring's rain events. And we added several of those to the capital improvement plan, and in your memo, those are shown in the table in red. Those are the ones we added. So I hope you have a colored copy of that in your copy.
That is on page.
That would be on the second to the last and the last page.
Page forty and forty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at my paper copy. That doesn't help you out.
You're talking, the CIP, the listing of all the projects, yep, was forty and forty-one.
Couple of things.
So there are a number of these that are very, very similar, and I listed some of those along the bottom of page one of my memo. And what we're really asking for from a staff level is some direction on how you'd like us to approach this capital improvement plan. There was quite a need at the end of last year, so we're going through the budgeting, a lot of these items got moved forward on the CIP. We do have about $392,000 available in the stormwater fund. If we look at going forward with these projects in this first year, we're going to spend about $307,000 of that, which leaves about, with some other expenditures we have, is going to leave about a deficit balance of $10,000 in the stormwater fund, so you're kind of starting from zero again. Ideally, what we try to do in the CIP is to balance that out, so you're spending a uniform, you know, close to a uniform or balanced amount every year and try to prioritize these projects and knock them off one at a time. So what we're really looking for is some direction as far as what, if we make this one a priority, you know, we're going to have a list of them coming down the road.
Well, one of the things, Mr. Paul, Hornby, is that I don't see the Trillium Lane one on here at all.
That one is still in the FEMA.
Okay. Because that's also a high priority, so.
It is, and we're working to bring a contractor out to take a look at that. What we're trying to balance is, we've been going back and forth with FEMA on what the actual cost of that project might be.
Okay. And then another comment I would have is, I had the opportunity to meet with, or to talk briefly, put in a good word, with Hennepin County Transportation Department, but that would require further discussions. I just very briefly kind of put a bug in Mr. Groob's ear that we had some issues pertaining to runoff and stormwater issues from County Road 110. So that's the other kind of piece to this puzzle with the Hoffman property. I really think we should try and pursue some kind of collaboration with the county on that, since it is partly their issue as well. And I kind of told them that I would be calling them, but if you would like to, or if staff would like to call and maybe orchestrate a meeting and get that going, I really think that might be worth pursuing.
From a planning standpoint, from an engineering standpoint, what we want to do is to make sure we have partners that would even, that would support the project.
Right.
So Hennepin County is the first one. The other one is the Mihaaah Creek Watershed District, and work with both of those entities to come up with a solution that, especially with Watershed District, something that they support as far as providing, restoring that channel.
Right, well, and if MCWD supports it and there's some BMPs involved, best management practices, we may then rank higher up on a grant scale. I think sometimes when you apply for those clean water funds and you don't, number one, you need partners, and number two, the more BMPs that you can show, the higher ranking you would get. So that might be another reason to bring in MCWD, so.
Correct, I agree.
So with this, yeah.
Yeah, just as, maybe I can do this, I can contact the county, and we'll start, we'll try to get the county and the watershed together and have some discussion about this project in particular.
Okay.
There also is another one that would involve both of them that we can also bring to their attention.
On forty-four?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just going to, Madam Mayor and council, the comment, just for context or clarification, is obviously when we went through the 2015 budget, that $300,000 roughly in potential products for 2015 was heavily dependent on grants or collaboration or any type of, what type of other revenue sources we were able to find, obviously with not qualifying or being selected for that one grant. That's, you know, obviously why we're having this discussion is, you know, to, we don't want to get to where we were several years ago and we had no money in the fund. That's why we've raised the surface water fees, you know, and the rationale to be able to take on some of these projects in a, what do you call, sequential manner or some sort of way. We don't just go back, you know, go up from $250,000, $300,000, back down to zero and then have to wait a few, you know, more years.
Well, I agree with that. The problem that we have with some of these erosion projects is that if we don't get to them immediately, they're just going to get worse, and then it's going to cost the city more. So those are the ones that I really think we need to get to, plus, we need to get to some of them, we need to start taking them off. I mean, we can't just keep pushing the can down the road. So we have to address them, and I would say we need to address the ones that are the most serious, and like Trillium, for instance, that's actually sort of a safety issue, too, because there's trees that are ready to get falling over and that kind of thing. So I know you were talking about FEMA, but, and then the Hoffman property has been going on for years, and so I just think we have to tackle some of them, grant or no grant, and we have to come up with some funds. I did talk to Mr. Barone about a couple of other options, and I know I mentioned this previously in our work session, but if there are some BMPs and some environmental things that we can do to handle the stormwater, but it's also environmental positive, we could use some of those funds. There's nothing saying we couldn't, so that might be, again, maybe not a huge source, but some funding sources. Then the other thing I also want to throw out there is, we have a huge fund balance reserve, and I think it's at the beginning of, or at the end of last year, it was at around 62% or something like that.
Yeah, it's around 60%.
And the state auditor has repeatedly told cities somewhere around 40 to 50% is acceptable. Once you start getting into that 60 percentile, they really frown on it. So I want to be careful not to bring it down too quickly or too steeply, but these are dollars that our taxpayers have paid, and they're just sitting there, and we have needs. And I feel upon us to be careful how we spend them, but we shouldn't just keep putting these projects off when we have excess money in our fund balance reserve.
In our general fund.
In our general fund. So, and these are projects that are citywide, that everybody benefits from, if you will. And so I see no reason why we shouldn't be looking at some of these funds to help offset some of these costs. So first, Ms. Thol, and then we're going to So first, Ms. Thol, and then we're going to go down the road, down the line.
Oh, I was going to wait, but.
Oh, okay.
What you said about the, the funds and if that doesn't compromise our double A plus rating or it would seem that that would be logical, I too want to be making some progress on some of these issues. It appears that there's the, the three ninety-two, three hundred and ninety-two thousand and that would not even cover the four bullet points here? That doesn't include the Hoffman. And then you said there are eleven items, is that correct?
There were eleven items that, some of those have been taken care of by FEMA already.
Okay, okay. What I would like to see us do is certainly start working on these sooner rather than later if there's some that we don't have to, aren't waiting on funds for. But I would also like to, as consideration is being given to which are priorities, have that not based on which ones we've received the most phone calls on, but rather, are there any safety issues? Are any of these, I think, I think the Jennings Cove, that property, the flood, the home has flooded. Also, I thought that that property on 110 North where there's the washout, although that's going down the hill to the lake, I thought, didn't they say, when, when he came out in his backyard, didn't he say that their basement had flooded from that, or do you not recall?
You're talking about Hoffman?
That's Hoffman.
No, that's the culvert that washed out, all that landscaping.
Oh, that's Minneapolis, that's Minneapolis Avenue.
Okay, okay, but.
Hoffman, Stephen Barber.
Okay, yeah, I, I would like to see those sorts of things if it's safety or, or causing additional damage to people's homes, be towards the top of the priority list. Now certainly if, if the, the water is being rerouting and making some of your yard unusable, that's certainly not desirable and if it's been a long time since this has been going on, you want it to be addressed. But I think it's important that, you know, we really prioritize these things with the money that we have available.
Do we have a list of the eleven in order of top five?
I intended to send that to the council members before you, before this meeting. I do have a copy with me. Sorry, I didn't make copies for everybody. If you want me to pass it down, I can certainly do that or get you copies after the meeting. But there were about eleven of them that, you know, varied in nature, but there's a couple of them that we took care of. At least restored those areas back through FEMA funding. For instance, Enchanted Lane was restored back with FEMA funding. Not, wasn't improved, it was just brought back to its original condition. That's what FEMA helped pay for at this point. And that's where Trillium Bay is still on that line, to give you an idea. I think they were coming up with fifty-four thousand dollars to reconstruct that and we're over two hundred thousand dollars. So we're, have a little bit of distance in our negotiations on what the reimbursement should be to restore that, so.
And just to clarify, Mr. Hornby talked about Enchanted Lane. I know the members of the council that are seated here tonight worked on the council last year when this kind of was going on. But as he, as he mentioned, we were able to restore it to where it was and that's what you're allowed to do with the FEMA dollars. You're not allowed to say, well, we'd like to take what you're giving us to restore it and improve it. That's not allowed. So we had to restore it back to that original status before the flooding, which doesn't make a lot of sense to us, but that's nonetheless what we were able to do. So it's not like we didn't want to improve the road at that time, but you're not allowed to do, otherwise you don't get the FEMA dollars, so.
So Enchanted Lane is on that list to clean water?
Yes.
So if we see the list and shows what each cost and then what's pending of those with grants, because of grants, is that what the list kind of looks like?
What the list is, it just identifies what the issue is, shows where it is on a map and then those items are shown, most of those, well, the ones that weren't taken care of by FEMA are shown in red on the stormwater CIP.
I think that would help.
So I'll get that out to you.
Okay.
I apologize, I nattered for this meeting.
Basically.
Hold on, just, just a second. Let's let Mr. Christians, you wanted to weigh in?
First of all, first of all, I'd like to, and I appreciate your comments, Mayor Whelan. This problem with the Hoffman, Joyce Hoffman, has been going on for years and years. I think at least ten years, maybe longer, and each year we have a rain and we have the spring thaws and the rain. It gets worse and worse. This is one that I would like to see as a, a real high priority. My first question is, is there a temporary fix until we can get a answer from the highway department or from another source to help us out? Is there a temporary fix, number one, and I want to address why? Joyce has been trying to sell this property now and as you probably are aware, when she had it up for an open house, they had to cancel it because there was water standing in the backyard. I'm a little prejudiced in speaking about this too, because of the water problems she's had. She's been a customer of mine for a number of years, which unfortunately I'm sad about that because it, it's, it's very heartbreaking to see somebody like Joyce have to go through this each year. The same thing holds true, but not as bad with Barb and Steve Hosmer. They're also customers of ours, so I'm a little prejudiced. So I probably shouldn't say anything other than I think those should be priorities.
And I think, I think from the tour that we received, it's pretty clear that they either have water in their basement, as Councilmember Thol pointed out, or there's a safety issue. So those seem to be both, those are two that are high on my priority as well, but the Trillium one is as well. So, but I do agree with Ms. Thol's statement, if it's a safety issue or they're having water in their basement, those need to be high priority.
So I would like, thank you, I would like to see Joyce Hoffman and especially hers. Because again, as you know, they're trying to move on with the property and to try to sell it. It's becoming difficult and it would be extremely costly for her to have somebody, you know, to get the price that she should have, rightfully so, out of it. So please, I would like to see that become a priority.
And I think that's why we asked to have a meeting with MCWD and, and the transportation, Hennepin County Transportation Department. They do have some, some responsibility here, so, and we're not saying all of it, but we're saying they have some. So we'll definitely be pursuing that. What else, what would you like from us? Because we obviously don't have enough money to do all of it.
No, there are some. The first bulleted item on that, on the first page of the memo, that's the one that's the Cardinal Coleman Halsted Avenue Project area. We didn't go by that one on the tour. We have a home in there that does regularly get water in the basement.
And that's for fifty-three thousand estimated cost?
That's the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar one.
I'm sorry, car?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, okay.
In part, there's been a lot of property owner issues and redevelopment down there and the lot that is the low point gets everybody's water. And there's a gentleman there who has built up his lot and built it up and sloped concrete away from the house to avoid flooding. Talked about when there's a heavy rain, he's got to open his garage door front and back to let the water through his garage to get out and around the house. So that one is also a very critical one that, where that, that home gets in a heavy rain fall event does occasionally get water in the house. So when we look at all these projects, the reason I'm bringing these up is that, just like the Hoffmans, there are a number of these. There's one over on Hard Scrabble Circle that, although the house hasn't got water in it, it's similar to the Hoffmans where it's gotten a lot of debris and erosion on the, on the property. And that one's going to be also another more difficult one to address if, but there might be an opportunity with those, that homeowner, if they want, they wanted to redevelop their site. So there might be some opportunity to do that when they do, when they rebuild a home there.
Now, we, we also took out a CIP certificate, but that's just for equipment, isn't it?
Correct, yes. Isn't, I guess, or if I can chime in, Madam Mayor and Council, isn't the main thing we're looking for tonight is if we want to bite off one or two of these projects and start going and whether we want to allocate, you know, out of that three hundred thousand, we want to do Ms. Hoffman's property, which is estimated a hundred thousand and one or two others or, and start making progress? And then if we're able to get any money back from the county or if we want to transfer any funds from the general fund? I mean, I guess that's the parameters we're looking for is how much do we want to, to, we're not going to be able to do, I think, all three hundred. I, I wouldn't recommend doing three hundred thousand worth of projects this year, but do we want to do a hundred, one hundred and fifty thousand and then try to get some dollars back and reimburse for some of this, or?
Let me ask you this then, what about, see, some of these have been ongoing for quite some time, as Mr. Christians pointed out. And if we keep kicking the can down the road, it's, it's just going to get more expensive. So what about, we say, yes, we definitely want to do three, three projects, the Hoffman being one, and have staff come back, but you know, three or four, why don't we take a look at our fund balance? I mean, if there is a small amount that we can transfer, that we can play with, I know we're doing pretty well. Maybe you want to give us an update next time on where we are on our current budget? Because I know we've been very careful about our current year's budget. We haven't filled some positions immediately, so hopefully that's, there's been some savings there. But let's see where we can squeeze the dollars from because we need to get to more than one or two projects. That's kind of where I'm coming from, is that?
All right, well, I'll start working with the county and the watershed district and try to get everybody in the same room. We can probably talk about a couple of projects right there.
Okay.
Could we also, knowing the circumstance of Joyce Hoffman, can we give her some encouraging words of communications that we're doing something?
Well, let's say, I think we're, I think what I'm hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, Council, but I think what we're hearing is the Hoffman, Hoffman property has to be a priority. That has to be on our list. We want to get that done. Is that kind of what I'm hearing? Am I seeing nods? I'm seeing nods. So we will have to bring that back in terms of who's going to participate at what levels and so on and we'll have to know more details, but I think it's fair to say that that is one of the high priorities. Why doesn't staff, kind of with Mr. Grimm, because of the financial part of it, bring back a comprehensive list in terms of what we realistically could do this year? I'd like to see us spend, if we have to, three hundred, three fifty, whatever, but considering maybe taking some funds from here or from there. But I, we have to. If we have eleven projects and we only do three, that says there's, you know, there's still hate out there that we still have to do. And if we're only going to bite off three every year, we're never going to get to the, we're never going to get caught up.
It's going to definitely take a few years to get caught up, Mayor, so. One question I would have for Mr. Hornby, what kind of, would the Hoffman project be doable this year? I guess is, is my, the essence of my question. I mean, how fast do we need to start in order to make sure?
We'll have to start right away as far as getting the county and the watershed together and moving very quickly on a, on a resolution to it.
Is this a sixty day, ninety day actual work project?
If we're actually getting to construction, it's going to be September, October at this point.
The, if I could add something to this, Mike, and we had a conversation about this earlier. As we all know, she's trying to sell the property, she's got a realtor, okay? Right now, having some unknowns, it becomes very difficult and, and very difficult to get a fair market value or price for her home. If she could go back to the realtor, if she had something from the city that said, hey, we recognize this, which we do, it's a priority, which it is, and there will be, this will be fixed, that this can go back to the realtor. So the realtor, when he sells his property, he's selling something that's going to take place, which has value versus, well, I don't know, is it going to get done or isn't it? You understand what I'm trying to say?
Well, I think that the, the issue we have is, I don't know that we can promise that it will get done this year, but I would think no later than next year.
Yeah, and I think if we could somehow communicate so she could pass it on to the realtor because she's got to sell that property this year.
Right. I mean, if, if we meet with the county and MCWD and they say, hey, this is an issue and we're willing to participate and we're going to put it on for next year and this is how much dollars we're going to add to it, I don't think we want to forego those dollars. But then we would know and we could be working on the, the solution throughout the winter and then we would be ready to do the work next spring. That's just a, for instance. So I don't want to say, I don't want to go to a homeowner and say, we're going to have this done by this fall.
Right.
And maybe it won't happen till next, right. But I, it's a priority, we're working on it and if it doesn't get done this fall, it'll.
If you were a potential buyer from that house and you were looking at purchasing that property and being on the lake, obviously you're going to feel much better about purchasing the property, knowing that it's going to get fixed, which is value versus not, so.
Correct, but, right, yeah. Also, are there any, in the itemizing and prioritizing process, I know, I know we want to be long-term oriented. We don't want to spend money twice, you know, to fix something partially and then to have to pay that much plus to, to fix it again. But could we look at, on any of them, if there are any, you know, so we could have more impact in addressing more residents' issues, any, you know, it's a three-step process and at least we can get the first step done. For instance, that property on 110 North where the, the culvert washed out along with the landscaping down into the lake. Some of that was because of the stormwater holding pond up the hill wasn't large enough or that, and that when, he said he could handle it when it was just his yard and his neighbors, but when that stormwater holding pond floods over and starts coming on down, that's where he loses the battle. And we saw that the, the, the trigger or the piece there that was supposed to control that was basically non-functioning. Is there anything where that or also the one on the Jennings Cove Park, those ponds, if we were to dredge those out, I know it's not a long-term solution, but would it buy a little time in capacity?
Well, that one in particular, I think we have to look at providing an emergency overflow or making that pond larger. Not larger by depth, larger horizontally, because you're provide, trying to provide more storage. Digging a pond in that area deeper is not really going to help the issue. Because if you dig below the outlet, you're not providing.
But has it been dredged, but you know, we also noticed that there hasn't been dredged in years. So maybe even dredging it at least, and we, we need to dredge it. So maybe just getting in there and dredging it this summer would also be of benefit, you know? Is that something, could Gary address that or should he?
Yeah, we did ask it actually, babe. Before I was here, there was a toll that it was excavated about five years ago, I think it was. They did make it larger at that time. The city crews actually went in and did the digging themselves and made the holding pond larger at that time.
Okay.
I don't think went depth, David might, no, I think we just made a larger area.
Yeah, there was brush and growth, volunteer-type trees that had grown, so that was cleared out and it was dredged.
Okay, okay. Well, and whether that's the, oh, sorry.
Didn't we talk about association being somewhat helpful in this?
I think that what we have to do on these stormwater ponds is also look at whose property they're on and who's got the responsibility to maintain them. And I'll have to work with planning to go through those development agreements to see who's responsible. For instance, the one we saw in Minneapolis, Alabama, that overflowed and went down through the neighbor's yard and down the bank to the, to the lake. That one has a weirder structure that we do not recommend even being used anymore because a few frost cycles and they come apart. Ideally, that pond, if it's, if it's clogged or if it's got a lot of vegetation and it's reduced volume, if it's the homeowners' association, it's your responsibility to do that. We'll notify them of, of that and also that they need to replace that outlet structure. Or repair it at the very least.
So you'll look into that?
We'll look into that.
So I think to Mr. Christians' point, do we have, do we have kind of, if you will, a plan? Staff maybe needs to come back with the top ones, working with our finance director because he has a money tree out there and. He'll be the money guru and come up with some additional funds so that we can do maybe three or four of these top priority ones.
If I may, Madam Mayor and Council, a question for Mr. Hornby on the Hoffman drainage. You've done a feasibility study, correct?
Correct, yes.
So the next step would be ordering plans and specs, which you're going to need to do anyway to work with the county and the watershed district?
The, we did talk to the, the district and they want to take a second look at that to see if that provides, they want to take a second look at, they had some. they want to take a second look at, they had some turnover in staff, and so they wanted to take another look at it with us, so I think it's good to sit down and go through that.
Okay.
And the reason I was asking the question earlier of you, Mr. Hornby, had to do with the following. My biggest fear in, in hearing what both the mayor and council member Christians were talking about, and I'm sure as the other council members will, will agree, we don't want to lose this year for the Hoffman property. I'm not as concerned about the fact that she's trying to sell it, but other, but I am concerned about the fact that this has been an ongoing issue that needs to be resolved, so I think resolving it this year would be a good idea.
Yeah.
I think we have enough money and our fund right now to just do it ourselves as a city, but I was kind of directing my question to you was about the, I'm sure we'd lose a little leverage with both the county and the watershed district if we said we're going to do it and would seek some sort of reimbursement for whatever percent of participation they would like to, to do, but I think that was kind of what, that was kind of what I was going for. And I think that's, I think would address both Mr. Christians and Ms. Wayland's concern about trying to get this thing done. So I think we have enough money to do that one. Whether Brian could pluck a lot more money off that money tree or not, we'll find out, but, you know, to try to do more this year, and if it's reserve money or whatever. But I think for me, this particular one, since we did have Ms. Hoffman's here, Ms. Hoffman here last year, and she's looking for a resolution. She was under the assumption that we're going to try to do it this year, and I don't want to lose that opportunity just by waiting for meetings to happen. I, maybe we can fund it ourselves and seek some reimbursement from the county to, and the watershed for whatever percent their, their contribution might have been.
We've already, and to Mr. Barone's point, we've already basically heard from the watershed district and the county, and the answer was no about sharing in the process. We, we have approached the watershed district, I think, you know, we, we applied through the grant through the county, and essentially, they, they said no, so I, I think, as Mr. Barone's saying, if, if you want to move this forward and try to have something happen this year, it's going to have to be out of city funding, or else it's going to be delayed.
Yeah, and I think the other thing that I think the mayor was trying to talk about when she was mentioning her conversation recently with the, the Public Works Director for Hennepin County, Mr. Gru, the grant that we were after was funding to fix the issue. I'm not sure if they're totally convinced that some of the work they did to, to upgrade the county road back in the day, fifteen years ago, sixteen years ago, is, if they're really aware of that. I would like them to, I think that was the reason for her saying, you know, there is some responsibility at the county level for this, because when the road was upgraded, these problems got worse. I don't think that's a coincidence. So, yeah, we did apply for the grant this year and got shot down, but that's kind of just this cycle. The historical aspect of this is that this road did cause some of the issues that are going on at this property by its being upgraded. So hopefully, they'll consider that. I don't know if they considered that in awarding of the grants this past year.
I think when they, when they rated them, this one scored lower. They were aware of the expansion of that, of one ten, and what impact it would have on, on the drainage system. That was actually in the grant that we put together, so we, that's how we were going to try to bring the county into it. So I do want to make sure that we still have buy-in from the, from the watershed district, that the solution that we came up with in the preliminary design is, is a design that they can permit and go through. They need to, we need to apply for a permit from them, that's number one. Whether the county participates or not, that's another story, I can meet with them later, but the watershed district is key in this situation, so.
Does staff have enough direction, then?
I do.
All right.
We'll have to put our collective heads together and kind of figure out a, a game plan using the, the list that Mr. Hornby's going to pass out tonight and try to come up with something that gives dollar amounts and potential funding sources and things of that nature, and what we can accomplish this year, and what we think might have to wait till future years, so.
With the Hoffman being completed, we're hoping for completion this year, then. Okay.
That'd be good, well, yes.
All right, all right, great. So, anything else? Otherwise, we'll move on. Next, we have the professional agree, I'm sorry, we have the contract with engineering firm D for the water treatment facilities.
Yes, in the packet, there was just an explanation of who would be receiving under, another correspondence, a copy of the contract. And I believe you received that Friday afternoon.
Yes.
Or Friday evening. We did review that at a staff level, and I reviewed it, other staff members reviewed it, the city attorney also reviewed it. We did have a number of comments, and they've addressed all the comments in the correspondence that we sent you.
Okay.
They're ready to sign the contract, and upon your approval, they will actually begin work this week.
All right, and then, so the comments were included in what we had in the packet, or are?
Included the one you received by email on Friday afternoon.
Okay, so those were addressed, then, all right.
We're still doing the, dancing around the public information, not, you know.
Right, right. So with that, questions? Comments?
I think, my comment is that in reviewing this from the last council meeting, I was pleasantly surprised that everybody was basically on the same page. We were all in the same church, sitting in the same pew, and that was pretty good.
Well, then, with that, I would entertain a motion to pass resolution number sixty-five dash fifteen, which will approve the contract for engineering firm D for the water treatment plant. Is there a motion?
I make a motion as stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion or comments? I was pleasantly surprised as well, Mr. Christians, thank you for mentioning that. So with that, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. Do we now tell you who we selected?
Yes.
Let Mr. Beatty address that, we just talked about that on our break.
Yes, I think now that the council has concluded the contract, you can reveal the name of firm D.
Okay. Who would like to?
We don't have an envelope, don't we?
Yeah, we don't have, drum roll, please, SEH?
SEH.
SEH, and it stands for something?
Short Elliot Hendrickson.
Elliot Hendrickson, okay. So that will be the engineering firm that will help us complete this project successfully, on time and on budget. So, thank you very much for that. Moving on, we have a professional agreement with WSB for wells three and five rehabilitation. Mr. Hornby, you're on again.
Well, thank you. As I mentioned to council in a previous meeting, I don't recall which one this was, but we have a maintenance issue with both wells three and five. This was brought to our attention through Public Works when they were doing some routine operational items with those wells. Well, five is in, has more of a priority to have some maintenance done. And when, I mean maintenance, what they're going to have to do is come in and pull the well, pull the well shaft, pull the pump, and then have to inspect it and see what's going on, if there's a, there's a problem with, with it. And so in doing that, we'll have to request that Mound turn their interconnect on to serve well five's area, which is the Saunders Lake area.
Right.
I, I would recommend well five be done this spring. And so these bids would, these plans would have to be put out right away and then have them bid, but I would recommend we bid three and five together. And well number three could be looked at this fall.
Okay, and then, if for some reason or other we decide not to do well number three this fall, can we make that decision later?
You could make that decision later, yes.
Okay.
What we'll do is we'll separate the costs between wells, the proposal form between five and three. And we provide a clause in the contract that the city can postpone or withdraw a portion of the work.
Okay. Also, I would highly recommend that we notify the neighborhood and let them know that this work will be done and that their water service will not be discontinued. It'll just be reconnected on an interim basis with Mound, and if their water, it's not our fault. No, but I just want to make sure that we have good communication with the neighborhoods there. I think it affects South Saunders, North Saunders. Does it affect Pinnacle Way? I don't, it does? Okay. Okay, so please, if there's some means by which we can notify them, yard signs, I'm not sure how, emails?
We can do a direct mail.
Direct mail?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We use what's in the PID for the property.
Okay, all right. I would appreciate that. Thank you very much. So, any questions?
How long does it take to fix well five?
Don't know.
Don't know, have you?
No one told me no, what's wrong with it.
So, and we can just stay with Mound water as long as we need to, so there's no interruption?
We'll have to work with Mound to make sure they, they can supply us for that time period, but it's probably going to be for a portion of the summer.
You know which well that is in Mound?
No, I don't know which Mound well it is, so.
Before we go too far with this thing, would you check to make sure it's the one that currently there's a well in Mound that's having some difficulties in terms of having water pressure? Their water pressure's down to fourteen to fifteen percent, which is gripping now, there's no water pressure. And they're in the process right now of trying to figure out what the problem is with that, so let's not.
We were probably going to resounding no.
Let's not make sure we're getting in that same well. I don't know which well it is, but I think it's over in that area.
I would assume they have, well, I, I think staff can find that out, yeah, yeah.
Just make sure we don't go to Mound and use the water with the well that they have virtually no water pressure.
Okay.
Also, just to circle back a little bit on the, how we're going to communicate it, would this be an opportunity for us to start doing some of the more electronic communication? We don't have their email address, I, I imagine, but could we post it on the website? And I know that our HR marketing person will be getting to that conversation. But, but if we could post it on our website, I think that would be good as well.
I think council member, Mayor and council member, we use any avenue and all avenues, so press release, website, direct mail, whatever we can do. If the newsletter timing works out, we'll use that, et cetera.
Okay, so I guess what we should probably do is just, first order would be to check with Mound if they're okay, and we can do that, then we're going to proceed. And with that, we should still approve this professional agreement this evening, because if we can proceed, we want to be ready to go. So, any questions on the agreement? Otherwise, I'm looking for a resolution to approve sixty-six dash fifteen for professional agreement with WSB for wells three and five rehabilitation.
I make a motion as stated.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further questions, comments, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. So next, we're getting on to another personnel issue. This is getting more and more exciting. So we have our personnel action, human resource communications individual, Mr. Barone?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you, in the packet tonight is a request to approve an action item. This is not a resolution, but just a request for the ability to move forward to try to staff a human resources communications coordinator position. This is the fourth of my four personnel actions that have, are in the process of being done, both late last year and into this year. Back in January, when I, when I actually got promoted to the city administrator position, a couple of council members asked about, well, what are you going to do to fill back the, essentially, my old position? At that time, I mentioned, and what has come to fruition is, I thought that the ability to create a different position, since it's been a little over five years since I came to the city back in October of two thousand nine as the assistant, to take a look at the position, I was, I was hoping to do a HR communications position versus an assistant city administrator position. And in telling you that, I was hoping that it would cost the city a little less money to have more of a doer for the, in those, those capacities. So if that is the case, the assistant city administrator position was a grade level seventeen. This HR communications coordinator position has been assessed at a grade level eleven. Salary range is fifty-five, six, approximately to seventy-two, three, so your approval tonight of my request for this personnel action will allow me to go ahead and start that process to fill back my, essentially, my old position, just a different title. Majority of the duties are the same, the communications is obviously the new piece. I did not do communications in my last job. It was actually put on the city clerk position, it was a bad match, not that Terry, our old clerk couldn't do it, but she essentially did have a lot of time to do it, so it wasn't, for a lack of ability, it was just for a lack of time. And by removing that and throwing it into this position, there were a few things lessened off of my old positions thing, essentially, the supervision, et cetera, which kind of brought this down into, I think, a more manageable range. So we're looking for those, those duties, those HR duties that are vital, but adding these also very vital communication duties. And, and so hopefully, with your approval tonight, we'll begin that process.
Well, this person will be very busy, based on the description, but...
And I'll be very happy to see somebody sitting in that office.
Yeah, I'm sure you will, and I will be very happy, too, because then we can get going on this communications part that we all are very much in favor of. And as you know, during our goal-setting, strategic planning, communications and citizen engagement, and was, was high, and networking was high on our priorities, so this is great. The description is, is very good. Like I said, this person will be busy, but comments?
Any comments on that position?
I've always felt that we've missed a great deal of many opportunities by not being able to utilize the social networking and the communication skills that I think a lot of other people do, and I think this is a huge step in the right direction myself, because there's a lot of opportunities, and I can name a few right off the top of my head, that we have missed or could have participated in with a person like that who would be utilizing the social media and networking. If you're in favor.
Yeah, so we're moving in the right direction.
I would just like to say that I think it was a good foresight on Mr. Barone's part to not just automatically replace the position, but actually look at it, if it's a good time for Minutista to restructure the responsibilities. And so thank you for that, and bonus that it's going to cost the city less, but, but hopefully be more effective.
Correct, those are all true.
So do you want a motion or just kind of approval?
I would actually seek a motion for the approval of the authorization to begin a search, and I'll start that process.
So a motion to authorize staff to proceed with hiring or the process of hiring a human resource communications coordinator?
I make a motion as so stated?
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, and as stated, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. I think Mr. Barone was promising somebody sometime in June.
That was the goal, yes.
That's the goal. All right, moving on to a selection of appraisers for a proposed north water treatment plant site.
I'm going to let Mr. Grimm start this, and I will happily chime in at certain points.
Okay, Madam Mayor and Council, this item, I guess, is sort of a item that came up, or was an item that was on the docket about a year or so ago when the city was originally going with a decentralized site plan. So what we did between myself and Mr. Barone is had some initial discussions with Mr. Borg at the school district and decided that it was, you know, good to go out and have the, get an appraisal done on the, on the property that we would need as far as that north treat, water treatments plant site. So we did contact three appraisal services and received three quotes back regarding having that independent valuation. I guess as a little background, back in two thousand, early two thousand fourteen, in February of fourteen, we had, I think Mr. Funk at the time had reached out to the county or with coordination with Mr. Borg, and the county had given a, a valuation of roughly about fifty-one thousand on the amount, you know, what it would be to obtain that piece of the parcel, that small portion. When we talked to the county earlier this year, they declined to update that valuation estimate. And I think some of it was just based on a choice or policy decision they made, some of it, I think, from, some of the fallout, maybe from early last year, I guess, just to leave it at that. Shown below is a table summarizing the three quotes that were received, so this is on page fifty-three of your packet, and you can... And you can see the, the cost ranges from two thousand two fifty to thirty-five hundred dollars. The timelines I put there too, because I think this is a time-sensitive issue as outlined. I also attached a letter that from Mr. Beatty to Mr. Funk in February of fourteen. That, once we identify the, the property and just have the, obviously, the purchase acquisition nailed down, there's still several things that need to be done to have this in place, so we make sure we have this by fall, you know, or late fall, so we can have the property to construct on. So, that's why that timeline, and when we, when I talked to these appraisers, I said, you know, when could you get this done? And you can see the varying was, you know, basically by, you know, verbal, right, you know, first part of the May, you know, report by, you know, middle of May was, was a couple of them, and then another one was, you know, within six weeks. So, but they also were the highest costs, so they, we sort of, or we did eliminate them. I don't know, the, the firm that we're recommending or the person we're recommending, they have experience in doing appraisals for many governmental entities, cities, counties, et cetera. If there's any questions, I guess that's a quick summary. The resolution's on page fifty-seven, but the, who staff would recommend, I guess if I quickly just read staff's recommended action, maybe I'll, I'll turn it over to, to Mr. Barone then. Or maybe I'll let you chime in now before we go to the staff recommendation and see if you have any.
There's also a timeframe too, that, that time-pressure sensitive thing that we're under is with the school board.
Correct.
We have to approve this, and I believe they recess, if you will, for the summer months, so.
Yeah, they do. They have a couple of meetings coming up here in May, and I think one at the beginning of June as far as regularly scheduled meetings. And after that, I guess, you know, would have to be any type of, you know, special, you know, called meeting. So, I think we're trying to work, you know, be a good neighbor partner and work within their timelines too, so, correct.
So, yeah, essentially, mayor and council, the school board meets in May and June, the exact same nights we meet. So, the first and third Mondays of May and the first Monday of June. And so, our goal is to be able to give you some sort of assessment at that first meeting in May, which would be after May one, when Ms. Lindstrom is able to provide that. It may not be a full written report, but we hope to have that by the tenth. That would be after our first meeting. We'll hope that council would be able to accept the verbal report, so we could take our appraisal from her to the school board and have it before them the same night we meet. The second, or third Monday, their second meeting, our second meeting, but the third Monday in May. Barring any unforeseen circumstances, it still leaves us a little flexibility to go to them in the June meeting. But we're, as Mr. Grimm mentioned, we have quite a number of tasks to accomplish in order to, once we purchase this land, to go forward to, to get this as part of the process to build on it, so.
And I guess one other thing I probably would just like to maybe speak to is that, and we as staff feel this is just the cleanest way to do it, just an arms-length transaction with the school district based on purchasing the property with the independent appraisal. You know, I know last year, there was some talk about as far as what type of in-kind service or this or that or the other thing. And I think just for all parties involved, and I think just the most transparent, clean, you know, method is just for the city to purchase what we need from the school district, you know, that we can agree on as a fair value and then, and go from there. Versus trying to tie it to anything or try to.
And the other positive about that is the fact that with this appraisal, we'll be able to work with our new engineering firm and see exactly how much land we have there to work with, what buildable. The other item that could happen down the road, if mound decided to do some sort of water treatment in their city, they've already told us earlier this year that they're not ready. But, you know, we could go back to the school district, buy an additional piece of property to hopefully aid in the, if we had to expand our, our water plant in that area, to accommodate a partnership with, a potential partnership with mound. That could be done at a future date, but again, this appraisal will tell us, you know, and the engineer's work will be able to tell us where we'll be able to site the plant, so we could expand in the future if need be. So, we just wanna know how much land is available, you know, how much it costs. So, I think we're just setting ourselves up for being flexible enough in the future, then in case we do expand, then we have that opportunity, so.
Question, comments?
On the land, Mike, with having the appraisal done, I guess, my concern would be that within that appraisal, we're identifying, that we're getting to the new engineering firm, that, that that will be sufficient to handle what we're trying to do. And also give us the growth. Right now, I don't think any of us can really sit here, we can guess, but I don't think we really know, is that land that we're talking about sufficient to do what we're looking at doing long-term?
I think it should be, but the fact that we're gonna get a fair assessment of the value of the land and the ability to do exactly what you just said. I know the WSB, when they initially proposed it, we're looking at, was it six tenths of an acre roughly? And we're, you know, so we're looking at buying anywhere between six tenths of an acre and an acre.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we don't cut ourselves short.
Right, we could, right.
And the appraisal report should have that square footage calculation, so maybe even if the council feels a little more comfortable, we should buy a full acre, I guess, versus point eight or point seven.
Exactly.
Then that would be something that we'd just feel extrapolated out.
When you look at the land, you go buy the land, and it's not really able, you can't really do anything with it, other than what we're trying to do with it. We're not gonna put a ball field there, we're not gonna put a shed there. I mean, it's really, from that standpoint.
It's next to our wellhouse.
It's next to our wellhouse, so it's a win for us.
Yeah, it's, yeah, because from the school standpoint, it's, it's not really worth anything.
No.
I always had it in the back of my mind that we would just have an acre. I mean, just round it out.
Let's do it, sure we don't have to deal with this again in the next five years.
Well, we could certainly put that, we can give that to you as an option. So, again, that's what the appraisal will be able to do for us.
Okay. Good question. Anybody else? Comments? Cause this is just another piece of the puzzle in order to get this project rolling, and we do this, like, this is time-sensitive as well. So, I'm looking for a motion to, let me see, it's on page fifty-seven.
Yeah, on page, I guess on the bottom of page fifty-four, the memo, it's basically staff would recommend adopting the attached resolution selecting Kelly Lindstrom, certified general appraiser, as the appraiser to perform the services as outlined in the memo. Her quote was the lowest standard timeline turnaround for the report works well for the timeline this item requires, so.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion as stated.
Well, and the only, I think maybe I just would wanna add to that, sorry, is that her quote was for a not-to-exceed fee of twenty, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, just to clarify.
That's, that's in the resolution.
Resolution, okay. Oh, there we go.
Okay.
I'll make the motion again.
With a fee not to exceed twenty-two fifty. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the hiring of Kelly Lindquist, not to exceed two thousand two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, two, two thousand. Okay, let me start there. Two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the appraisal of the property that we anticipate purchasing from the school district. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Yeah, I don't think we, so, oh, it just ran out. Okay, with that, we have reports, and now I can't get back into my, let's start with reports on that end then. Buy some time. Mr. Christians, any reports?
No, but I'll make a comment, and my comment would be, as soon as humanly possible, with the human resource communications coordinator. Well, let me ask you this first. WCC, there's a lot of things that are going on at WCC that are gonna be great for West Tonka, for our community. There's a number of things that are in the works and in plans, which I really can't say at this point, because none of them are quite finalized yet. But has, has the city sent our, what, sixty-dollar fee to participate in that at this point, do you know?
I believe so. If not, I'll check for sure.
Could you do that for me, because?
You're talking about the West Tonka.
The West Tonka Community Conference.
I thought we authorized that way back in January.
We did, a long time ago, but I had one of the members stop over at our office Friday of the board members for WCC. And had asked if there was something, because as of last Friday, I was told or under the impression I had not received that check. It's not, it's sixty dollars or something. If you could do that, please. And then, once that takes place, if we go forward, and I mean, we're going forward with the human resource communications coordinator. How soon would she be able to participate in some of the things? Because WCC has a great resource of communicating and putting information out amongst the other businesses. You know, they have their website, they have Facebook, they have all these things available. In other words, some of us use WCC if you're looking for something as simple as looking for, to hire somebody, goes on their website. So, we as a city need to utilize that communications tool that's available just in addition to with WCC. So, the West Tonka Community Conference, that's just one of the opportunities we've been missing. That's basically all I have to say.
Okay. Ms. Mortensen?
I, I have a few things. Spirit of the Lakes, everybody write down July eighteenth, Saturday, and that is the day of the parade. And we also have a booth that day. And just in the back of your mind, we're gonna need at least one vehicle or two. So, what did you do last year, Bob?
Last year, well, last year we had two things. One, my truck pulls one of the things in the parade, the BNI group, I donate, my donation to the BNI group. And then, last year, there were two convertibles. One was donated by, oh, what's his name? Out of Saint Bonnie.
Turk.
Turk. One was donated by Turk. You may wanna, if you're on that committee, you may wanna call and see if they would have an interest in doing it again. The other one was like a private party, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't get in, I didn't coordinate that, so I didn't know. But then, as the parade took place, there were two vehicles, and the mayor and council members kinda split up, followed each other, little sign that was on the side that said city Minatrista. It wasn't a big deal, it was pretty minor.
So.
Now, the question is.
Is it an afternoon meeting?
It actually, there's, the parade, I think, starts at eleven, isn't it?
Yeah, it starts at ten o'clock, and we have to be set up between eight-thirty and ten o'clock.
Yeah.
And then the booth runs from eleven o'clock to six o'clock.
Yeah, there you go.
So, as far as arranging the vehicles, is that something I do?
I would believe so, cause last year I didn't have anything to do with it, so.
Yeah, it was.
Hate to play hot potato with you.
It wasn't, it wasn't a big deal. Well, it was nice, because we had a couple of nice convertibles.
I, I know an individual, I can contact him to see.
That has a convertible?
Yes, mhm, antique.
Yeah, perfect.
Great.
So, just remind me.
I will. And the booth, there is no tent, which may be a problem if it rains. So, if there is somebody that has a tent we could use, it's like a ten by ten-foot space.
Yeah, that's not a problem. I mean, what we can do is a matter of timing, and we've been involved in this thing.
What I would recommend, could I make a suggestion here, Ms. Mortensen? Those are details that, could you put it in an email to staff, and then they can send it out to the council? And if the council members have something, like have a tent or, or know of somebody with the car, we can respond to staff.
The trick to it is because of the parade running from ten to eleven, and then the booth opening up at eleven.
Right.
The trick is having somebody, possibly Mike or one of you guys to kinda set that up. It's not a big deal, it's just timing. Because you're not gonna be there to help set it up, so you gotta have somebody do it. Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
I'm, I'm sorry.
No. Just kidding.
I have to, and he's not here right now, but if he was, Paul Falls needs a big hand, a big round of applause.
Well, wait, wait, hold on, hold on. Let's, let's finish with Ms. Mortensen first. We're gonna go down the road, then you can say what you'd like.
Okay, I just had to say that, cause it just came.
It's raining, I'm gonna pray it here.
Yeah, really.
No pun intended.
Right.
Okay. I am trying to get flyers for Minatrista Days, if that's okay, to put at our table for Spirit of the Lakes.
Sure.
You're okay with that? And I am meeting with Twin City Live manager on tomorrow for lunch, and I'm gonna see if we can get a feature on Twin City Live for Spirit of the Lakes.
Good for you.
I know. Okay, Pioneer Sir Creo. Can I hand these out? The meeting we had, what I'm handing out now is the cover sheet of what all the surveys came in at, and it was very well done. The questions are stated up above, and then all the answer, the people, whether they voted yes or no, is designated and read. So, as you can see, question number one, nobody, other than independents, wanted to or agreed that they would pay up to a hundred percent more of what they're, what they were currently contributing to. Nobody wanted to go to two-hundred percent increase. And then I started breaking down a little bit more in questions three, four, and five. But bottom line, when you go to number five, it was, the majority was that they are interested in forming a district, leaving only Greenfield and Loretto as staying as a J.
And Loretto would have to be, be part of it, because they're completely surrounded by Medina, so if Medina is on board, Loretto would have to be. You can't be destroying, it has to be contiguous, if you will, so, yeah.
So, after the surveys were handed out, we all went around and talked a little bit about why we voted the way we did. And in the end, they decided to bring back two more questions to the councils. One was, would we change our vote by any means if we didn't do the hundred percent increase and just did, it could be two percent, five percent, ten percent, doesn't matter. Is there any interest in that if we stated a percentage of increase, other than a hundred percent?
What was the other question?
The other question is, we are currently, they're only offering ten percent funding. If on any projects that go through as approved, they would consider going up to twenty-five percent, which is what Bowser recommends.
Well, my comment is, we had not one, but two discussions. And the last discussion, as you know, was quite lengthy, it was like an hour and a half. And we came unanimously to a decision that we were in favor of creating a watershed district, and if that didn't happen, if the rest of the communities didn't want that to happen, that we would look into the possibility of taking Minatrista out and annexing it to MCWD. Nothing has changed since then. I mean, there's nothing different now than there was two weeks ago. And I'm not in favor of constantly regurgitating, if you will, the same issue, cause I think we really thoroughly discussed it and came to that conclusion. And it says to me by this, that there's a four other, three others, so there's a total of four communities that are in favor of creating this district, and that's what Bowser would like to see, so why are we going there again? So, my recommendation is, we've made our decision, let's move forward, let's move on. If they wanna do something else, let them do it, and then we'll pursue our second option. That's kinda where I'm at. Unless you guys wanna rediscuss this again. Okay, is that pretty clear?
That is what I will bring back at our next meeting.
All right.
So, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Pam, because I know this is not an easy task, believe me, I know.
It's very interesting.
Very interesting. Thank you. All right. Ms. Thol, and then I'm gonna get back to you, Mr. Christians, don't worry.
Just a small update, attended the Parks Commission meeting, and it was very brief. We just met briefly to address an issue that's now going to the Planning Commission, and then will eventually come to us, but just to put it on your radar. There was a, well, an application from Tradition Development to develop, a development on Conner Road one-ten. It had been approved and plotted back in two thousand eight. The developer. one-ten. It had been approved and plotted back in two thousand eight. The developer didn't act on it back then, it had since been expired, and now they're bringing it forward again. So that will be coming our direction, probably not the next meeting, but maybe the one after, one of the next two meetings.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Christians, you wanted to say something about Chief Falls?
I got a feeling that it's going to be discussed shortly.
Okay.
Well, I think you're correct.
Okay. Do you want to do that?
Well, I think we'll let Mr. Christians, since he was excited to talk about, talk about it, but I have something to follow up with.
Okay. Do you want to?
I believe, and what was done was amazing. Has anybody seen the skit or play that was done at the West Tonka High School?
You're about to see it. Yeah, you're about to see it.
You're going to see it. I mean, have you seen it before?
No, I haven't.
You've not seen it before?
It just happened Friday, right.
Right.
And then they.
It happened on Friday. There were several people I know that were there.
And I had meetings, yeah.
You got a phone call, you got to get over here. It was absolutely amazing. It was one of the best, and I've seen these before, these mock, mock things. This is by far better than anyone I've ever, ever seen, so.
Well, it was videotaped.
Let's see it.
And, yeah, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it, so. Can you dim the lights? We may have to read lips, huh? I think you have to hit the button in the middle.
Let's.
Should play.
I don't know what that is going on here.
Uh-oh.
It's free.
Well, you can play around with it. Maybe we can, I'll do an update, I'll do my update real quick.
Yeah, yeah.
So, let's see. First of all, I'd like to ask if we could add at our May, at our first meeting in May, our road discussion improvements and where we're at and kind of a CIP, you know, kind of a list, and are we going to do any this year? If so, we need to get going with those. So I'd like to ask that we add that to our May fourth meeting. Let me know when you're ready.
I'm just trying to get it past the commercial.
Okay.
That you mandatorily have to watch.
Okay.
You might have to watch your commercial.
Is it queued up on the website?
I think it might have to, no, it's actually, I've got it listed all over, I've got it on Facebook.
Turn the light down.
Yeah, we want to show them that this stuff does happen, and it's real, and it's scary.
On a sunny spring morning at Mount West Tonka High School. A dark scenario is playing out.
Nine-one-one, what's your emergency?
Something these students hope they never have to witness in real life.
We hope that it impacts them so that they won't be in a situation like this.
Sienna Bowser and her fellow student actors spent weeks planning this mock crash. It's prom night, the student driver has been drinking, and he hits a car with the mom and child inside. The driver's date is thrown from the vehicle and dies. His friends in the back suffer serious injuries. CPR is performed on the mom and the other car.
It's kind of emotional, I feel like we, I don't know, head home.
And the driver, the person responsible for this crash, is ultimately arrested for drunk driving.
And we just tried to really make it feel like it was a real situation that could happen.
See, the only thing they didn't show on that there is, in addition to that, Ridgefield Medical Clinic was there.
Yep.
And also the helicopter, Memorial Helicopters was there.
Helicopter came in, right, right.
And it was so real, that there were a number, I I met with Jeff Peterson this morning, I had a meeting with Jeff Peterson, actually, he was at our BNI group on Tuesday also, and we were talking about that, and he said that there was so real that cars were coming in.
Thinking that.
Are you okay? Is everything happening, what happened to the city? And you could probably expand on that, because were you there yourself?
Yes, at a mayor council, yeah, I was there, and there was a lot of people actually crying in the audience, it was that powerful.
It was amazing.
It worked out really well, and I thank our partners with Mount Fire and Ridgefield Medical Center, and Brandon White, our SRO, he put a lot of work into this as well, too, so worked out better than we could have ever hoped, so.
So how many officers from Minutrista were involved in it?
It was myself, Ryan Wagner, Brandon White, and then Chief Falls narrated it.
Okay, and then what, who helped coordinate and plan it all then?
It was with the high school, and then Brandon White, our SRO.
Okay.
Worked with them, and so we kind of tried to put the public safety part together, and the high school groups, sad, helped put the actors together, they did a great job.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. When we rolled up on scene, it looked like an actual crash.
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, good job.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll see if this works, if not.
Final take.
Yeah.
Something these students hope they never have to witness in real life.
We hope that it impacts them so that they won't be in a situation like this.
Sienna Bowser and her fellow student actors spent weeks planning this mock crash. It's prom night, the student driver has been drinking, and he hits a car with the mom and child inside. The driver's date is thrown from the vehicle and dies. His friends in the back suffer serious injuries. CPR is performed on the mom and the other car.
It's kind of emotional, I feel like we, I don't know, head home.
And the driver, the person responsible for this crash, is ultimately arrested for drunk driving.
And we just tried to really make it feel like it was a real situation that could happen to any one of us.
And they got some help from Minutrista Police and firefighters, along with paramedics, a medical examiner, and even North Memorial Air Care. The costumes were tailored, and the blood was made from corn syrup and food coloring. But for students here, the message was well-received.
I think a lot of times, students think they're invincible, and like, oh, this is never going to happen to me, but seeing it in front of you, it makes you realize it's very possible.
It really brought out a lot of emotions, and I was really grateful for so many people who came and helped volunteer their time.
This mock crash was made possible by a grant from State Farm Insurance, but emergency responders didn't cost a thing. Police, firefighters, EMTs, even the helicopter pilot donated their time.
School leaders told John that some of the money from the grant went toward distracted driving education, and that focused specifically on texting and driving as well.
Good, thank you.
Very good.
So, great, yeah, we hopefully will see more of those, because I know texting and driving, even amongst adults, is an issue. So, well, one of the reasons I wasn't able to be there is because on Friday morning, I attended a Lake Minnetonka Mayor's meeting hosted by Hennepin County Commissioner and Board President Jan Callison. So that was very informative and nice to be at. The other thing, I will also be attending the annual Minnesota Mayor's Conference this coming weekend. It starts on Friday afternoon and concludes on Saturday evening, and it's being held in White Bear Lake this year. And prior to that, I will be attending the WSB University. It's the training program, I believe, David, you're going to, for the comp plan that's coming up. If anybody else, is anybody else you're going, then we should talk and maybe carpool, because.
That would be great.
If anybody's interested in carpooling, we can always do that. Let's see, what else? Also, I'll be attending the Planning Commission meeting coming Monday evening. It is my month for doing that. And then I'll be, let's see, also, I attended the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities last week, and Mr. Group was the guest speaker, and also the Hennepin County, the head of the Hennepin County Environmental Services was able to meet him, and so there were some networking opportunities there. Hopefully, they will help out, I'm not sure. And let's see, and then also the Gillespie Center, there'll be a meeting, and myself and Mr. Grimm are going to be going to that, and that's April thirtieth at four o'clock at the Gillespie Center. There's also a fire advisory, this is a special meeting, it's going to be on the twenty-fourth, and I will not be able to attend.
Twenty-third.
I'm sorry, it's Thursday, yes, the twenty-third, I'm sorry. It's Thursday, the twenty-third, and I'm not sure on the timing, I think it's four o'clock, isn't it?
No, I think it's the seven PM. I thought it was seven PM. There's, there's two fire things, I was going to ask Mr. Christians, there's, there's one on Wednesday, and that's the, I believe, the regularly scheduled Mound Fire Department meeting. I know the mayor and I have some other place to be that day, as does Councilmember Mortensen and a few others from staff, the exact same time. So I was wondering if you were attending that Mound meeting at eleven AM on Wednesday?
Now, which Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday.
That's the regularly scheduled, this, this fire district meeting is the special one, that's seven PM Thursday night. I'll be attending that.
Okay.
I don't know if Mr. Christians has that on his calendar or not, so.
I, I have a huge conflict that I cannot get out of on Wednesday, so my answer to that is no.
Well, I'll let the fire chief know, and hopefully, if they have some materials, they can send them to me, and I'll distribute to both of you guys.
Yeah, I think, I think Vicki knows. I've never missed one, but I've got a huge conflict on Wednesday.
Okay.
Yeah, and I know that Mr. Brony and I are going to be in another meeting, so, okay.
So, I have to go, but I have to go to the other one before I go to this one.
And the other thing, I forgot to mention, I will be at the Hunter's Crest HOA, the Homeowners Association meeting tomorrow evening, and it's their annual meeting, so I hope to meet a lot of people and answer their questions. So, well, we'll have to see if there's going to be another special meeting for the, because what they're trying to do is see if there is an interest creating a fire district. I know when I was on the council, we talked about that, and it's kind of been a long time coming, and we're hoping that that'll kind of move forward.
Correct.
So, we'll want to make sure we're involved in those discussions. All right, Steph?
I don't believe we have any other of us down the road, anybody?
Wow, we'll get out of here in time for the game, huh?
There you go.
All right.
Go wild.
The hockey game, go wild. Is there then a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Mr. Christians made the motion, and Ms. Thole seconded that. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much.